All right, the time is now 6:00 PM. I'll call tonight's school board meeting to order. Role call has been taken and we do have one trustee online from our trustee from Seeley Swan. So we'll go ahead and stand and do the pledge of allegiance. All right, just want to say happy new year to everybody. We'll move on to item three, which is to review, revise, and approve tonight's agenda. Are there any motions to change the agenda tonight? CNN, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as written. Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by Vice Chair Hobins. Any public comment on this agenda item? All those in favor for approving tonight's agenda as written, please raise your hand to indicate yes. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now we'll move on to item four, which is to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting of December 12th, 2023. Is our motion to approve those meeting minutes? Moved by Vice Chair Hobins, second by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any trustee comments? Any public comment on this agenda item? All trustees in favor for approving the board meeting minutes of December 12th, 2023, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So now we are moving to item five, which is the community connection. And I'll go ahead and ask our two guests, Sienna Solberg and Karen Bartels, to step forward. And then I'll go ahead and let Superintendent Hill, do you have anything else to say to their introduction?
Nope, just that we're grateful for the partnership that we have with Spark and with Karen as being our arts integration instructional coach. So looking forward to hearing more.
Thanks. Good evening. Thanks so much for having us and just wanted to first say thanks so much for your support in arts education and the partnership with Spark Arts to ensure equitable access to arts education for our kids. So thanks so much. Tyler, is it working?
The arts have the power to spark imagination, ignite innovation, and transform learning. Our vision is that every student receives a comprehensive arts education that is woven into every school day. A thriving arts education ecosystem has four main threads. Arts is curriculum, where specialists teach the art and music standards. Arts experiences are high-quality, one-time events. Arts-integrated curriculum is a creative process to learn both arts and core content standards. And arts-enhanced curriculum, which uses the arts as a learning tool. The organizations and people who deliver and support the arts are vital threads as well. Spark Arts Ignite Learning ensures that each thread is supported and woven together so that every K-8 student in Missoula County Public Schools has equitable access to a vibrant arts education.
Thanks, you can advance the slide deck. So we have a PowerPoint just to help guide our conversation tonight and discussion. But really what you just saw is this tapestry, right? Woven together and all these threads and people are coming together to support this arts ed ecosystem. And without one, it would unravel. So we're really lucky to live in such a vibrant community, arts community, that really supports arts and our youth and have so many partnerships to really create this collective impact, which is Spark Arts Ignite Learning. And again, thanks so much for your partnership. So tonight, we just wanted to focus primarily on the arts experiences and the arts-integrated curriculum. I wanted to highlight some of the arts experiences that we have happening this year. So for kindergarten, we have puppetry, first grade African dance and drum. Second grade goes to MCT. Third grade goes to the university for a dance performance. Fourth grade has Missoula Symphony. Fifth grade, Missoula Art Museum for a gallery tour and then a hands-on arts experience. Sixth grade is a private screening with Big Sky Documentary Film Festival. Seventh grade, a theatrical production this year with Montana Repertory Theater. And eighth grade is Superman, the Native American hip-hop artist, where we have a performance with him. And all of these experiences are really designed and curated to make sure that our students have equitable access and exposure to the arts. Some of our students wouldn't have these opportunities otherwise. So we really make sure that every student has access to all these different art forms that hopefully inspire and create memories. And then also really building that background knowledge and schema of an art form through these arts experiences. And then there's Superman performance. So arts integration has really taken off this year in the district. We're really lucky to have Karen Bartels, who is really supporting this initiative and making sure that things are happening. Arts integration is an approach to teaching in which students construct and demonstrate understanding through an art form. Students engage in a creative process which connects an art form and another subject area and meets evolving objectives in both. One of my favorite examples of arts integration is the water cycle in dance. So students are learning dance vocabulary, the different levels, right? Locomotive movements, some choreography, and then the cycle of water and evaporation and everything, right? Which is naturally moving, so they support each other in a natural way. There's so many benefits to arts integration. A lot of the focus of the district is about engagement, right? In the arts, we're seeing students engaged in ways that they may not otherwise be. You stretch the students who may be more traditional learners, right? Into this, into these creative ways. And then also really some of the students that don't shine normally are shining. And Karen's going to tell you a little story in a little bit about that. But it's also about student buy-in, equity, those 21C skills such as critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creativity. And then this connective learning piece and empowerment of both the teachers and the students. So one of the layers of arts integration are these arts-integrated residencies, where Spark Arts trains local teaching artists with Kennedy Center trainers so that they have like this immense knowledge of arts integration and figure out the natural fit with their art form in the curriculum. And then they come into the classroom and do a five-session arts-integration residency. So all of the K-8 students in Missoula County Public Schools has a five-session arts-integration residency. This year, we also added PK, so that's been fun with some ceramics.
And this is my turn. So the district has taken on a three-year initiative for arts integration across the district, which is really exciting. As Sienna and I are getting into it, we're one of the few, if not maybe the only, district taking it on as a district-wide fashion. So that's really very exciting. Year one implementation is really aligned with our teacher clarity because arts integration is very much a spotlight strategy. It's a strong strategy to use in the classroom. And so the way that we are moving forward with it is identifying teacher leaders in every school and really having it be a kind of a groundswell where teachers are trying the arts-integration approach to their teaching and aligning it with one of their core content standards. And then what happens, and it's been happening all over, it's really a lot of fun, is I'll go in and coach, work with a teacher, we'll use one of their, like shadow puppetry. And then all of a sudden, it's ping, 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 ping. I want to try that, I want to see that. And then you've got all kinds of teachers trying out different approaches to their teaching and using the arts. And really building the capacity for arts integration is really year one. Also, developing a common understanding of what arts integration is, is really the goal. So the first, how it kind of has progressed is we had an arts-integration committee that came together of elementary teachers and leadership, all of the principals, and really worked to define a plan and lay out a good, clear plan of how we would like to see this go. We kind of called it like an artopia of how it would play out. And that team really kind of guided the work. We've launched a three-year plan, which I'll talk a little bit about. I came on as an arts-integration coach, which has been really exciting. And then this, are you taking this or am I? Okay. This fall, we went to bringing the middle schools in. So a lot of the work's been with the K-5 and bringing the middle school administrators and the middle school teachers in. We went to Nevada and were able to tour several art academies there for the middle school teachers to get to see it in action in a middle school and how it worked. And so that was really exciting and it was really powerful. And then all three of those teachers that went came right back within the first month and implemented an art-integration lesson in their classrooms, which is really a testament to the power of seeing it and the capacity of those teachers that were chosen to go. Does know you?
Yeah. Hi, again. So we have provided arts-integration professional development for both classroom teachers and artists, right? And so our model is bringing them in, having teachers really inspired by these national presenters. And then Karen follows up with them by emailing them, supporting them, coming in and doing coaching. We provide resources for them. So that's kind of how we're building that groundswell right now. We have four Kennedy Center teaching artists coming out. We've had Daniel Barash, Marcia Daft, and in the February summit, we will have Melanie Rick, who does some visual thinking strategies and reading across the curriculum, as well as Ryan Horegon, who focuses on arts integration and students with autism and how those can blend so nicely. And then we have been recognized nationally. So we went to Vegas, right? And they are inspired by us as much as we're inspired by them. And then we've had Spokane and Superior come reach out to us. And then Karen Bartels, Karen Kaufman, who's a retired professor at the university. And I will be presenting in, at the Kennedy Center in February. And Superintendent Hill and Mayor Davis will be joining us as well in DC for the Any Given Child Exchange. And then we also expanded arts-integration residencies to PK, like I said, and programming to support the IEFA curriculum, where we're bringing in Chris LaTrey, who's the Montana poet laureate, as well as working with Aspen and Cameron Decker on some ledger art professional development.
Oh, sorry. They came out in, this is last month in December, and we were able to have 35 teachers participate in her professional development. And she also did five classroom demo teaching opportunities, which were really great across the district. And what her strategy is, it's called moving through math, and it teaches students about the patterns that are in math and using rhythm and beat and patterns to teach different math concepts all the way down from just counting one by one to multiplication, division. So it was really pretty neat. And then the teachers that participated in that professional development have been following up with me on different coaching sessions, so it's pretty exciting. The next artist that came out this fall was Daniel Barash, the shadow puppetry. And this is in a second grade classroom at Russell Elementary. And she chose the standard of retell, second grade standard of retell. Story retell along with character voices when you're speaking. And so we did the history of shadow puppetry and the origin from Daniel Barash that we learned. And then she taught her standard. And then the students used the skill to retell How I Met My Monster. They were hilarious. They were fantastic. And one of the best stories from this moment in this classroom was, and there was one student who wasn't always able to participate with us in the lessons for various reasons, but when it came time for performance day, he was the flashlight guy. And he held the flashlight for every performance. And he took his job so seriously to keep that flashlight still and the way you have to zoom it in and to make characters smaller or large. And he was a part of it. And what was really exciting is not only was he a part of every performance, but he also was able to do the retell that he was a part of because he had heard it so many times doing the different performances that he was actually queuing his classmates on which character came in next in the scene. And so pretty powerful moment to get to see a student connect with his classmates and also get to participate in not only the second grade standard, but also in the art form. So really pretty great. I think that was on that one. Our hope for year two is to continue to ground, that groundswell, continue to get more, and to inspire teachers for that teacher leadership role, continue to do learning walks, and to really, our partnership with Spark in bringing out high-quality Kennedy Center professional development opportunities. So teachers are getting more and more exposure to the arts as an approach to their teaching. And then year three, big dream is that, you know, 80 to 85% of our teachers across the district K-8 are using one to two of the art-integration approaches to their teaching as part of their practice and that they are continuing to grow in that, adding it to their toolbox as educators.
And we'll just leave you with this quote here by Kelly Pollak. And it's really about what arts education can do. We're not trying to necessarily build all these professional artists going into our community, but really building these holistic, complete human beings who are creative and can contribute to our society. So thanks again for all of your support. I greatly appreciate every one of you. I know you've been on tours and seen our residencies as well as our art teachers. And we just really appreciate your continued support of arts education. Thanks to Trevor Lebowski for serving on the Spark Arts Board. Vinnie Jamona and Barbara Frank for really helping move this initiative forward. And for Superintendent Hill for continuing to support arts education and our partnership with Spark.
All right. Trustee Witcher.
Thank you guys so much. Deeply appreciate the arts-integration approach. I just can't help but think a little bit right now. I know that this kind of isn't directly what you're speaking to, but could you let me know what your funding source is for these programs?
Yeah, that's great. Great question. I think there's a lot of confusion around, you know, that we're funded by the Kennedy Center, and that's not true. We're definitely supported by the Kennedy Center, but find really local resources. So a lot of what the Kennedy Center does is come in and do consultation with us, right? And figure out how can we create buy-in and ownership in our community? And then we find the funding sources. So we're largely funded by Washington Foundation, Logjam Foundation, a lot of individual family foundations, Montana Arts Council. We have some city funding. We get some funding from MCPS. And again, like individual, Missoula Gives is like a big, big campaign for us as well.
Thanks for clarifying that. I just, I just want to, I know that right now in our district with the loss of ESSR funding, our art teachers in the elementary district, a lot of them, the pattern's being changed. And it's going back to what we had pre-COVID funding. And I just want to acknowledge the work of those amazing teachers that have been with us since COVID and how deeply appreciative I am of them. And then also just bridge an understanding that not all funding is in one pot for the district to choose to do whatever they want with. And so I think sometimes when I'm talking to constituents, they say, well, there's money for Spark. Why can't we take some of that for our teachers in Title I? And just as a board member and a community member, I'm so appreciative of all the unique ways that this district goes to give chances to kids to shine. And I see Spark Arts as being one of those things. So a little bit of a soapbox, but just something to think about. So thanks.
Thanks for your support.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Oh yeah, my questions always seem to come around when we talk about student outcomes and what you're going to be measuring in the second year and on. And I guess I'm guessing that some of it would be just participation, but also do you have a way of saying, yes, kids who were able to participate in this somehow learned better in their math classes once they understood patterning in math and things of that sort?
Yes, so the, as, I can speak to myself as a classroom teacher using arts-integration for about five years as my, one of my approaches to teaching. It became an alternative assessment form. So students could demonstrate their understanding through an art form. For example, writing a rap or demonstrating with a group with some tableau. They could demonstrate their understanding using that art form in the same way that they could in a written paragraph if that's how they wanted to demonstrate it. So our goal is to be able to gather that data once we really kind of build the teams. So when I say build the teams, we've been reaching out to teachers. We have so many teachers in this district that are already using it and that have the Creative Pulse Masters from the University of Montana. And really, it's kind of going to start building that anecdotal records and start kind of gathering that data. And we've been working with Austin, it's Mind Pop, right? Texas. And how they gather data and been trying to explore different ways that we can start to collect data for year two to demonstrate the way that students are able to retain what they were taught through it. So a lot of the research that I've done around arts integration is students that were taught and were taught through the arts-integration were able to retain more of the information than they were had they not been. And what it does is it forces students to create something with the material that they've been taught. They have to take something, reconstruct it, and create. And it really solidifies their understanding. So we're hoping through some partnerships to find a great way to keep that data going. But again, we're new to the game with a district-wide initiative on how to, we get to kind of forge the path on that a little bit.
All right, thank you again for your presentation. So now we'll move on to item six, which is public comment and correspondence. We did receive written comment, which we all received and read. And now we'll move on to public comment. And so the public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Their chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes. Any public comment?
We do have public comment tonight. The first public commenter is Jerry Petasek.
Hi, my name's Jerry Petasek, and I'm a Northside resident.
Could you please spell your name?
Oh, sorry, J-E-R-R-Y. And then my last name is P-E-T-A-S-E-K.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a Northside resident and I have three children. I've been a Lowell parent for, I think, 16 years, which I realize makes me older than I want to be. But so be it. Over the 16 years that I've been at Lowell, the staff and the administration have just been excellent in providing the, not only education, but social and emotional learning for my children and I think all the children that have been going there. With any professional, there, there's a limit to the amount of workload that you can take on, given a certain amount of resources. And I think for the first time, I'm seeing that Lowell is maybe reaching some of those limits. I know that there's hundreds of new homes going in on Scott Street. And I'm excited for all the new children and families that will be moving in. But those new families will also require that Lowell have more resources. And the only reason I'm here is to advocate for our school and say, please, in the coming years, as things change on the North and West Side, please take a closer look at Lowell and make sure that all those folks have the resources they need to succeed. Thanks.
Next is Jack Metcalf.
Jack Metcalf here. J-A-C-K space M-E-T-C-A-L-F. I am a West Side resident. Before that, I lived on the North Side. I have a son in fourth grade. I bought my house when houses were reasonably priced, maybe eight years ago. One of the main reasons I bought that house was the proximity to Lowell. I have always really liked that neighborhood. I like the community feel. There was a lot of pride in the neighborhood. And there's a lot of diversity in the neighborhood for Missoula, in my opinion, which I always appreciated. I do see a lot of new residents being built on the North Side, the Velagio. Across the street from my house, there's apartments being built. By Burn Street, there's apartments being built. This year does seem a little bit more different in the neighborhood. It seems a little bit more, there's more people. And I feel like the class sizes have gotten bigger. And engagement in those classes, I feel like, has lessened with the students. My mom was a public school teacher. I love public schools. I have a lot of opinions about private schools that I won't talk about. And I love everything you guys do. And it's quite amazing. I think public schools is one of the greatest things that we have. I was an educator for a while in my past. And there is like a sweet spot when there comes a class size. And I think we're exceeding that at Lowell at the moment. There's a lot of needs that are, it's really, I can see burnout happening with the current situation. And yeah, I don't know. I think there are a group of us parents that are concerned and we're willing to help any way we can. I don't think we have a solution, but we're definitely open to exploring more options. And yeah, that's all I got, but you guys are great.
Next is Sarah Hickey.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hickey, S-A-R-A-H-H-I-C-K-E-Y. We are worried about the teachers and students at Lowell. The Lowell teachers and staff are amazing and have years of experience with the high needs of our students and their families. But the resources needed to address these needs are stressed. Everyone in our school has felt the impact of the significant growth Lowell has had so far this year. The community school model is exactly what Lowell needs and has been a huge benefit to our neighborhood. Social workers, onsite after-school care with Parks and Rec, a satellite food bank pantry, the Partnership Health Clinic. As our school population grows, these resources need to grow too, to be successful. We ask that you please take this into consideration when planning for next year and beyond as our neighborhood and Lowell is set to welcome families into the Velagio. our neighborhood and Lowell is set to welcome families into the Velagio and the Scott Street developments totaling over 500 housing units. We love our teachers and staff. They are not at Lowell just because it's a job. They are there because they care deeply about this unique and wonderful Northside-Westside community. Our teachers and our kids need attention. Thank you for your time.
Joshua Nichols.
My name's Joshua Nichols. I sat up here last month and read a letter into the record that--
Could you please spell your name for us?
Joshua Nichols. J O S H U A N I C H O L S. So, yeah, as I said, you all saw me here last month. I read into the record a letter that was signed by about three dozen Lowell parents, and I just wanted to come back and kind of share in my own words a few things that my peers are sharing too over here. First and foremost, as they've said, Lowell is a great school. We absolutely adore the students, the teachers, the staff. There are so many great things happening there. There's a student leadership program. Lowell is literally a community center. Lowell's piloting programs that can be replicated and taken to other schools in this district in this state. And we just can't stress enough how much we love our school. And we're not here as any criticism of what's happening there, just the opposite. As has been said already, this year, staff and students are under stress due to a significant increase in enrollment. It's going to be amplified as Northside and Westside communities continue to shoulder the load of affordable housing needs in this community. One thing I want to point out, I don't pretend to be anywhere near as well-versed on educational matters as any of you, but in an effort to educate myself on these issues, I read an article recently called "The Effect of Primary School Size on Academic Achievement." Happy to provide a citation if anyone's interested in reading this. But the article actually challenges the notion, I acknowledge this, that smaller class sizes are better, particularly in regard to student achievement and test scores. However, this article cites two key exceptions. Two groups of students that are, I quote, "significantly harmed by school size are socio-economically disadvantaged students and students with learning disabilities." This finding, I believe, reinforces the point that we're all trying to make. A school like Lowell Elementary faces unique challenges anyway, and enrollment at this Title One school deserves heightened consideration and attention now and going forward. I ask that the district take time to just engage with the Lowell staff and student population. Go talk to the kids. I'm confident you're going to gain a better understanding of the unique challenges that we're seeing this year. Finally, and in conclusion, on that sign-in sheet that I signed over there, I provided my telephone number. I point that out because I think I can speak for all of us when we say, we don't want to just come here and pound our fist and make demands and walk away. I think we, as a group of parents, it's so hard to know what we can do on situations like this, but I will say we're committed to engaging and being part of a conversation going forward to hopefully come up with solutions. So thank you in advance for the consideration that I hope you give us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for what you guys do and allowing us to be part of this process and having us here. Really appreciate it. Are we good?
Say and spell your name, please.
Dylan Rinker. D Y L A N R I N C K E Y. E R. Okay. So first, my name is Dylan, and I have a daughter, Ruby, in fourth grade, Ms. Highlands class, and she absolutely loves it. So we're here on her behalf and all the kids. Full disclosure, my wife Shannon is the district's grant writer, so I want to make sure everybody knows that because she's awesome. So now I'll just read this because I didn't have time to rehearse. So I really want to thank the Lowell teachers and the staff and Principal Cooper. So for the past four and a half years, we've received so much support for our family at Lowell School. My daughter loves attending Lowell, and I asked her at one point, who is your favorite teacher so far? And she cannot answer that. She has been so supported by the teachers, and we really appreciate it. So my support and appreciation for Lowell Elementary and the community school model are genuine. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and a licensed addiction counselor, and so I really understand and appreciate the value of wraparound care, and that's what this community school provides. Let's see. So our concerns and our appreciation for Lowell are genuine, which is why my friends and I are here today. If increasing population is not met with supportive services, we'll lose seasoned teachers and staff who provide such amazing care and education for our kids. Class sizes are increasing, and without addressing this and the challenges it brings, then the academic success will suffer. One teacher cannot address all the academic, emotional, and behavioral needs of 30 kids. Lowell is not an apples-to-apples comparison with other elementary schools. I think we all know this. My fear is that if we don't speak up, it sends a message that we're content. What we are is concerned, and we should all be concerned. This concern comes from our pride and our connection of the Northside and Westside community. I want to stress this, we are not angry parents. I know that there has been some concern that we're here to tell you guys how much we dislike the school. Absolutely the opposite, we are so appreciative. However, we're not quite certain as to what we should do next. So we're looking to you, as the experts who know the experts, to give us some direction so that we can participate even more and to continue to give resources to Lowell because we're so proud of Lowell, we're so proud of our kids, and we're so proud of our community. So, yeah, just thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
No further public comment.
All right. Thank you all for your public comment, and thank you Tyler for your assistance. So now we'll move on to item seven, which are reports and announcements. And first up, we'll do our student trustee reports. And first up is Big Sky High School.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you guys had a great New Year and a great holiday season, and thank you for your time this evening. After a great winter break, Big Sky looks to finish this first semester off strong. Big Sky students have been hard at work preparing for finals this week. All finals will be taken next week with Friday being a day students can come in and get extra help, finish any finals before we enter the second semester. The teachers at Big Sky are very accommodating during this time, and it's clear that they're really there to help our students succeed. They offer extra support and guidance to ensure that everyone is feeling ready for their exams. Today is a special day, and it is School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. And at Big Sky, we are so appreciative of all of the things that our SRO Officer Cameron does. To show our appreciation, students from all grade levels have been writing positive statements, compiling a huge thank you card for the best SRO in Missoula. It's a small, yet meaningful way to express our thanks for his dedication and commitment to the safety and well-being of our school community. This Thursday, our theater department will showcase the Over the Moon production, a captivating one-night variety show. As we celebrate their incredible talent and dedication, we also acknowledge the need for fostering community support for the arts at Big Sky. Despite their amazing contributions, the arts often do go unrecognized. The theater department invests significant time, passion, and effort into these productions, and we encourage attendance and support from our student body. We are hoping that our new announcement update, which will come over the intercom in the last five minutes before lunch, will be a great time to ensure students are on similar pages regarding these extracurricular activities. This dedicated time for announcements should hopefully minimize interruption complaints as we believe intercom announcements are necessary. Moving on to some of our sports, our wrestlers competed in Bozeman, and we are happy to see that both girls and boys place. And we also look forward to watching them while we host a tournament against Glacier on Thursday. Basketball season is well underway, and we've had some great moments supporting our beloved Eagle teams. The crosstown games have been particularly exciting, carrying a sense of energy and school spirit that we, as Eagles, really appreciate. While our boys faced a very tough match against Sentinel, our girls won 53 to 28. Another spirited game unfolded last Saturday against Hellgate, where our boys played their hearts out despite a great team. Our girls once again rose to the occasion and added a fifth win to their streak. It's not just the varsity teams that are impressing. Our younger teams also give a very promising glimpse into Big Sky's basketball future. The positive energy in the student section is contagious, and it creates a fun, welcoming atmosphere for students. And it also helps that our admin is encouraging respect and discouraging negativity, even in the face of situations like the opposing team's chants and interesting referee calls. We look forward to cheering on our Eagles the rest of the season. And that's all.
Thank you. Now we'll have Hellgate High School.
Good evening, everyone. Wilson, I hope you guys had a wonderful holiday break, and we're all excited to be back. To recap some of our old business, we just got back from winter break, and so everybody's in full grind mode, dare say, for finals in school, getting back into the regular activities. Our basketball season is in full swing as we just had our crosstown game against Big Sky with our boys winning and our girls unfortunately losing. We also have a boys' home game tonight against Helena High at 7:15 with the girls away at Helena. There is also a wrestling match at Sentinel and Big Sky later this week on Thursday and Saturday, respectively, along with a swimming meet being away in Cal Spell, and we wish them all the best of luck.
On to some ongoing events. In Student Gov, we're continuing to plan our Golden Goat, and the student body is getting increasingly excited as we get closer to February 15th, that day of goat. We actually have plans to visit the Atom Center on Thursday and start the final stages of our planning for our pre-party and setting up our signs, which we're very excited about. We're also planning our Spirit Week and activities for the day and week of goat for the whole school. And then coming up soon, we have the All-State Jazz Festival happening this Friday through Sunday, which we're very excited to be sending up many students to. And our theater department is continuing their rehearsals for their upcoming play, Mean Girls, which I believe is spring. And Speech and Debate is also continuing to do well in all of their meets that they've been participating in. A school-wide event we have going on this week, we've doing a donut scavenger hunt for National Glazed Donut Day, which is this Friday. We've hidden a bunch of like paper donuts around our school, and students can find them, and on Friday at lunch, they're able to bring them to the front and get a free donut. Just before finals week, we kind of wanted to do something fun for the students, and if they don't find a donut, they can also buy one for a dollar. So we're hoping we can also do a little bit of fundraising as well. And so the end of the first semester and finals are happening next week, and we know this is a really stressful time for a lot of students. So we're trying to make sure students know that they have places to go and people they can talk to around our school. That's something we really want them to feel comfortable with, is going and asking for help. And then also recently in student government, we've given our senators the opportunity to write to some Montana legislators and leaders about topics in which they're passionate about. This is going to be continued into next week and then sent off after that, which we thought was a great way to get as many people as possible in our school involved in some real-life democracy. So, yeah.
Coming up, we have the opportunities for, in student government, for students to earn half an elective credit for participating in the regular Wednesday meetings in a way to boost attendance and try to incentivize joining student government and getting people involved across the school. And it also helps when we have events like Golden Goat going on, where student government plays such a vital part in planning everything and going through. We really can't do it without a large senator body. Advanced problems in science students will also be going to the National Qualifying Science Fair in Logan, Utah on February 9th, and presenting many projects with, which they have been hard at work on for the last almost eight months. National Honor Society projects are coming to conclusion, and project presentations are ongoing until the end of February. That's all we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to Seeley Swan High School.
Thank you for your time tonight. Our Leo's Club before Christmas break held a 50/50 raffle at one of our home basketball games, and we raised $183 for the Seeley Lake daycare facility for their needs for this winter season. A graduating senior from 2023 contributed to the cause and won the raffle. Our BPA members had their regional competition this morning at the Missoula College. Seven members went and competed, and four are going to state. Our student council's food and clothing drive was extremely successful this year also. It was a class competition, and the senior class barely came out on top. The student council also held a pajama and ugly sweater day at the school before the break to bring in the Christmas spirit. Our entrepreneurship class had their market day after working on their projects for the first semester of the school year. They were all extremely successful, and there was a very large turnout from our community. They are now working on their invoices and counting their profits before the semester ends. For our sports, we only have basketball, and the Lady Blackhawks have come back from a rougher start to their season and now have a record of 4-4. Our boys also now have a record of 4-4. Our conference games will begin this weekend, and the teams are ultimately preparing for the 13 seed district tournament in Frenchtown, which will be held on February 15 to the 17th. Our younger teams are doing extremely well, with both JV boys and girls remaining undefeated so far this season. Our first semester ends on January 19th, and the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will be switching into their second two of their block core classes for the year. The seniors will remain in their core classes, and as well as electives, will remain the same for the next semester. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So next up is Sentinel High School.
All righty. Good evening. First off, I'd like to say Happy School Board Appreciation Month. Yeah, I didn't even know, but Happy School Board Appreciation Month. And I think I can speak for everyone here, and we really appreciate all that you do. And I hope that everyone also had a great holiday season. And Sentinel has had a lot going on, and we have a lot in store for the future, so I'll just get right into it because I have a lot to talk about today. So firstly, we'll talk about sports. Sentinel offers many sports, as we know, including basketball, wrestling, swimming, cheer and dance in the winter. Boys and girls basketball has had a great start to their season so far. Boys basketball beat our rival, Big Sky, and they play Capital tonight at 7:15. They're currently 5-1 and ranked second in the state double-A. And girls have also been doing amazing this season, and they played Butte on Saturday, and they play against Helena Capital today. And they'll play Helena High tomorrow. And they're currently 3-for-3 and ranked, I think, fourth in the double-A division. Sentinel Swimming recently competed in Butte this weekend and did amazing, and they have a few more competitions coming up. Wrestling has also been doing great this season and continues to work harder for better results, and they're very busy this season. They travel a lot. They competed in Bozeman on Friday, and they also would like to mention that they have six female wrestlers, which is double what they had from last season. And they're gearing up for the Rocky Mountain Tournament, which is being hosted at Sentinel, and there's going to be 38 teams there, some crossing state lines. And Cheer and Dance have been gearing up and practicing for performances at the basketball and goat game, and Cheer also has an opening for a new head coach. And there's a lot of new things around Sentinel, so we'll go into some recent updates. Sentinel has a new esports club, which is partnering with the U M esports team, which just recently won a national competition, so they'll be great mentors to our students. The PE department recently received a new classroom set of yoga mats as a grant recipient from the Donors Choose Choice for PE classes and health classes, and they'll be getting certified through the American Red Clock Cross for CPR and first aid as their final. Sentinel recently started a chemistry club, or known, also known as Chem Club, and they've met twice and have had attendance between 15 and 20 students at each meeting. They're doing fun, enriching, theme-based experiments. And in their December meeting, they made oxidization reduction holiday ornaments, and January will be candy-based experiments, excuse me. English through class-- English through classes are working on career exploration projects. As part of their research process, they've been paired up with people working in their chosen fields. Students are interviewing nurses, astrophysicists, aerospace engineers, welders, electricians, and more, and they will incorporate what they learn into essays and in-class presentations. We just had sixteen students successfully audition into the Montana All-State Band, and the All-State Jazz Performance will be held in Helena on January thirteenth and fourteenth. We successfully held our yearly fireside dance in December, and we had over five hundred students attend. This money was used to support three families through their Christmas. The band will also be traveling to Italy this March. A hundred and ten people in total will be traveling, and they will perform in three amazing venues located in Rome, Florence, and Cremona. Life Skills is working hard to spread awareness in basic instruction in American Sign Language. They just started up a Sign Language Club, which will be working towards something to perform at the school talent show. The sociology/criminology class recently toured the current and old Montana State Prisons in Deer Lodge, and they learned about the history and current state of our prison system. Sentinel Theater is now preparing for their state theater festival, which will be held February sixteenth and seventeenth at the University of Montana. And they will be performing the one-act play The Brothers Grimm Spectacuathon. Auditions for the spring play, The Thirty-Nine Steps, will be in February, and that will be performed at Sentinel in April. Sentinel has also seen its fair share of fundraising recently. Fundraising for the long-awaited baseball team has started. And Sentinel is also continuing to fundraise the Purple Power Project, which would be a new activities facility that can hold many uses for students and teachers. They're currently holding a raffle for twenty dollars a ticket, and the winner will be announced at the last home basketball game, and they will receive ten thousand dollars for entering if they win. And Sentinel's gearing up for finals week, which will start on the sixteenth. Sentinel has a high bar for academic expectations, so our weekly schedule will be adjusted to help students have a less stressful week so they can perform to their best ability. The final exam can be in the form of a master exam, final project, traditional exam, or final paper. And the adjusted schedule shall have no impact on the lunch or bus schedules. Now Sentinel's also working towards many things for this year and next year. We're currently gearing up and preparing for the master schedule for next year, and many teachers and students have expressed wanting to go back to the earlier start times. Sentinel is continuing to work on the school-wide phone policy so it is more cohesive. We have seen it lighten up as we get further into the school year, and many agree that it's time to reinforce the policy so students can stay more focused in their classes. Sentinel is also working on offering more CTE credit options, as it is a crucial credit needed to graduate. And we're also working on improving our intervention programs and offering high-set options to keep kids engaged at the school instead of dropping out while we still keep the bar high. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to introduce the Willard Student Trustee, who's new and observant tonight. So we have Ashton Love, who's now representing Willard. So welcome, Ashton. All right. Now we'll move on to announcements from the superintendent. So I'll turn the floor over to Superintendent Hill.
Been waiting for, aren't we? Just a couple of quick announcements. We have been going out and about presenting budget challenges to staff. We did almost twenty meetings. Almost, I don't know how you do almost twenty, but it was twenty meetings. Our last one was last week to central admin and people who don't necessarily have a school to call home. So we've been doing that, and they are very appreciative, have had a lot of positive feedback about coming out and being communicative, transparent, and trying to express what the challenges are that are facing the district. So next, not next, but January thirty, thirty-first, I have been invited to participate as a representative of the double-A Administrator Group at the Health Insurance Summit, which will include bonus points, if you know all of these acronyms, the MQEC, the MTSBA, MREA, Masbo, SAM, MFPE, and MUST. And I actually know all those acronyms, so. But, yeah, it's, representatives were selected from each of those organizations as we continue to explore the potential for a health insurance trust under the legislation that was created. So it's a pretty tall order. It's a big challenge to try and bring a very diverse group of people with diverse needs and issues together. Also heard today from Casey Blue, the MEA president, that two representatives from Missoula will be in attendance as a representative from MFPE, so it'll be great to have some more participation from MCPS there. And then we're going to be doing some RFQ interviews here later this week for facility facilitation. And so we're looking forward to that, looking to secure someone to help the district review facilities and to help provide some guidance for long-range facility planning into the future. And then I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Assistant Superintendent Jamona, who has some great news about mobile crisis teams.
Thank you, Superintendent Hill. Appreciate the time. Just a quick update for the group. Tyler and I actually had an interview today with the Montana Free Press discussing the crisis mobile unit that we've had in place since last winter. So early last fall, we engaged with Providence and Youth Court. They approached us and said, one of the areas that we are noticing in our community and wondering what you're seeing in your schools is increased needs of students, citations for students through Youth Court, I shouldn't say students, teenagers through Youth Court. And is there anything that we can do to problem-solve together to help address some of these needs? So we obviously had an immediate interest in just collaborating and brainstorming and figuring out how do we help support students in any way possible, as we've seen some increased needs, really before COVID, but was probably accelerated after COVID. And so we began that discussion and developed a protocol and a flow chart and were able to identify a licensed therapist that was able to respond immediately in our buildings with a student that may be escalated. That process is outlined. There's an opt-in. There's a very specific protocol to what that looks like. But it's been probably one of the most, I would say, well-received interventions that we've used, Six Twelve. The program was designed to start in the middle schools, and then quickly, when we saw its benefits and the ability for this team to really respond and help support, our high schools also got the feedback and had a chance to see what it could look like, and they wanted the support as well. So we've had one therapist since last year. She has been able to support Six Twelve. And through the continued grant writing from Youth Court in Providence, they have now acquired two more therapists. So these therapists will now be associated with our K-five band, our middle school and high school. And again, it's just another intervention, prevention, postvention that we're able to use for our students and families. So it's a pretty awesome shareout. We've been working at this for a long time with Youth Court and Providence, and their partnership has been critical moving forward.
All right. Thank you. So now we'll move on to item eight, which is the consent agenda. There will be no board discussion for consent agenda items, as these are routine. Any board member wish to discuss a consent agenda item, they must make a motion. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion to take anything off from the consent agenda? Seeing none. It's a high school motion. Is there a motion to approve the high school consent agenda items? Moved by trustee Witt, seconded by vice chair Walker Andrews. No board discussion. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. All trustees in favor for approving the high school consent agenda items? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous, all trustees present. And so now we'll move on to nine, which is new business. And first topic up is the general fund update, and this is an information-only item. And so I'll turn the mic back to Superintendent Hill and Mr. McHugh.
And I'm just going to turn it right over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right. Thanks. I attached on page thirty and page thirty-one are some projection information. This is really just a different look from what you're typically seeing, and it's really in the format of revenue and expenditures. So last meeting in December, we talked a lot about the expenditures for FY twenty-three for last year. The books are closed, so we could look at how we expended funds, and we really looked at three categories. The salaries and benefits, fixed and O and M, and instructional. So if you look on page thirty, that first column recaps at the top the revenue. These are the revenue categories we typically talk about that leads to our adopted budget of forty-two point one million. And then the expenditure categories, those three, the thirty-seven point three million salaries and benefits, three point four for fix and O and M, and then one point two for instructional. There's a slight variance between the expenditures and the revenue, and that's just an encumbering. It's not a deficit, so that's why it's not reflected there. But what this spreadsheet is attempting to do is to just portray our projections in the form of a financial statement that you might see, a revenue and expenditure statement. So then if you jump to FY twenty-four, this is based upon estimates, but we're refining these estimates. And we're doing so by looking more closely at our staffing. And so when we adopt budgets, or you adopt budgets in August, they're based upon a lot of estimates. And now is the time to refine those and to learn about where we may have some capacity. If you look, again, in these three categories, I'm just identifying the projected increases, mostly under salaries and benefits. And then after total expenditures, you'll see a deficit of nine hundred and forty-one thousand. And here's how you can look at, this is this year, this is how we accounted for that deficit. We relied upon ESER support, which means we'll take some of those salaries, likely certified salaries that are sitting up in the, up above as an expenditure, move it to ESER funds. We'll also move some certified salary to IDA Part B. We've adjusted this allocation, elementary and high school. That's a plus to the elementary deficit or reduction to the high school. This position savings, you can pretty much pull that out because now we're starting to look at actual expenditures. And then the tuition fund, again, that'll be staff that will move to a separate funding source. So after those adjustments, we're at a plus four forty-seven. You pull out the four hundred thousand, and we're at a plus forty-seven thousand. And that's before we look at Title II A, that also might pull out some certified staffing from this mix to put us in a more positive picture. But the point is, is when we use the FY twenty-four data, we refine those expenditures, we'll be able to then really budget FY twenty-five tight, and that's the plan, is to budget it tight. And so if I project to FY twenty-five, just inputting some of the information we've talked about, you'll see kind of where we sit now. It's a little different than what we portrayed last month, but not by much. This increased data doesn't include any percentage increases. It's just building ESER funds in. It's steps and lanes, and that's really that cost. It also includes retiree savings that are projected. But as mentioned, as we work with the committee, our budget levy committee will refine these expenditures and plan to budget tight for next year. The high school is on page thirty-one. Really, it's the same info, different percentage allocation that we talked about last time. One of the details for FY twenty-three we didn't jump into was the activity and athletic expenditures in the general fund. So I reflect the summary of those expenditures there at the bottom of page thirty-one. So you'll see in the general fund for FY twenty-three, there's a million, one point seven million expended. The retirement fund expenditures covers salary or expenditures, fringes, and contributions to the retirement plan for employees. It's overstated here because it includes the contribution on behalf of the athletic directors at the school. That's why it looks high.
Am I allowed to ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
What's a fundraising expenditure?
So for FY twenty-three, the high schools offset obligations through fundraising. So this is how much they spent during FY twenty-three to support their various activities and athletic programs, which is pretty interesting data, I thought. It's quite a bit that's fundraising that supports those programs.
Is that the, like, white fees or any of that that they do at each different school? I only know Sentinel because that's where my...
Yeah, it's not necessarily white fees. It's the fundraising piece. So it's the funds that are generated through gold card sales and oranges and that type of thing. And it includes activities as well as athletics. So there's a number of schools that raised quite a bit of funds to go to Hawaii for a band trip. But still impressive, the amount of community sport. You know, that's all I had to share with the board. We went through quite a bit of detail last time. As mentioned, our committee will meet again this week, so we'll be diving into some more detail.
Okay. So explain this to me in the simplest terms ever. So for FY twenty-five estimate, for elementary, we're almost, you know, a quarter of a million dollars in the hole. What happens when we're in the hole like that?
Yeah, and a good place to look is to go back to FY twenty-four. So we're in the hole, nine hundred and forty thousand. And how we accounted for that deficit is we looked at outside funding sources. What's not reflected here is any reductions, because FY twenty-four, this year, we also contemplated some staffing reductions. And they're reflected up above in the change in salaries from twenty-three to twenty-four. So the one point three million for certified staff, it includes retiree savings, but also includes positions that were reduced. So it's all encapsulated within that dollar amount. And that's the detail that's not reflected here, but it's intended to be a summary of those changes. So a lot of work.
Trustee Webster?
So along the same lines, that in twenty-five, that doesn't yet include any potential elementary cuts or whatnot, right?
That's correct. That's correct. And the other thing it includes, sorry to interrupt, it includes building ESER into the general fund. So it includes that three hundred and fifty-five thousand on the elementary having to get built into the general fund. And that's all covered through ESER funds paying for certified staff, so that's built into that million twenty. None of the million twenty includes any percentage increase for staff. It's steps and lanes. It's very much bare bones. Sorry to interrupt.
And then my second question. So on the special ed allowable costs, as a revenue, is that a result of increased expenses that are being matched? Or is it a result of changing how things are allocated? Like, is that actually new money, or is it just money that's a result of new costs, and so it's kind of a wash?
Yeah, so you're looking up in the revenue section, and it's really three factors. Two of the factors are tied to enrollment. So there are related services block grant and instructional services block grant. And the other is a disproportionate cost reimbursement, which is what you're talking about. It's our expenditures relative to statewide expenditures for special ed. So we get this sort of district allocation based upon our expenditures relative to the state. And if you look, when we reallocate IDA Part B, those are federal funds. And what we're saying here in the elementary is that we're moving some of the general fund staff, special ed staff, to these federal funds. On the high school side, we're doing the opposite. We're taking the exact same amount, but we're moving those expenditures into the general fund. That's why it appears as a negative. So going into FY twenty-five, we should see the high school grow on that disproportionate cost reimbursement because we're expending more, we will be expending more general fund dollars for special ed. Elementary might go down.
Pat? I think I know the answer to this, but just for clarification, we got a three percent inflationary increase from the state. Did that translate? percent inflationary increase from the state. Did that translate on the elementary and high school side?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to mention that. So if you look at the top on the elementary, you'll, you'll see after the FY twenty-four estimate column, the percentage change. And for, for this year, there's a three percent increase and the change was two point four four. That's a factor of enrollment decline and then an inflationary boost to the funding components. If you look into FY twenty-five, our projection there is again a three percent inflationary increase, but the true increase, even with the voted levy, will be one point nine one percent. Again, it's the, we're still able to grow despite enrollment decline district-wide. So it's, it's both those factors working against each other. Inflationary increase to the funding components, but declining enrollment. The high school is, benefits both ways. So it's growth of the three percent and then enrollment increase, which translates to a four point three percent increase in the, in the general fund budget in the high school. So that's a really good point.
Any other trustee questions?
And he knew the answer to that question.
I just want, I guess my point was in asking the question is that, you know, oftentimes staff or the public will look at this and say, well, you got a three percent inflationary increase. And the reality is, is it's not really a three percent inflationary increase. If you have declining enrollments and other factors, and we haven't even talked about some of the other funding sources where we pay for staff and other things that have declined upwards of twelve percent, like Title I, though, like, that's, like, though, you get hit for, for those numbers as well. So those aren't even reflected in this. So it's a, it's one of those things. I just want the board to be aware. I want our community to be aware that even though that's what it was projected to be, if everything remained the same from last year to this year, that would be a three percent increase. But nothing stays the same.
That's a great point.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. We will move on to the second topic, which is to approve the call for school elections for the elementary school trustee, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash three. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right. Thank you. So we have a series of resolutions calling for elections. And, and we're, we're in front of this resolution, partly because the later resolutions you'll look at involve levies. So we're, we're trying to get that information out there and talk about it. The, the topic, the first one is elementary school election. We have two positions. Both are three-year terms. The deadline for candidates to file is March twenty-eighth. The April fourth is the deadline for candidates to withdraw. And then we certify the ballots by April fifth, which we're planning to have the board do at a meeting on March twenty-sixth. So that's the first item, which is a elementary trustee election.
Any questions on this item from a trustee? Seeing none. This is an elementary board motion. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Moved by trustee F. Garris, second by trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for approving this resolution, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Now on to three, which is to approve the call for school election for high school trustees, District A, B, and C, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash three. Back to you, Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. So one trustee in each of the District, Districts A, B, and C. District A is a one-year term, District B, three years, and District C, three years. So there's three, three spots on the high school side. Same, same deadline, same dates.
Any questions from a trustee? Trustee Mercer?
I think there, the date needs to be updated on the third line. It's got twenty twenty-three.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So this is a high school board motion. Is there a motion to approve the resolution with the updated twenty, our year change? Moved by trustee F. Garris, second by Vice Chair Hobbins. Any final comments?
Oops.
Any public comments? All those in favor for approving this resolution, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, including trustee Vogel. And now we'll move on to item four, which is to approve the call for school elections for elementary general fund levy, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash four. And another, back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right. Thank you. So similar information in terms of dates, we're, we'll, we'll look to certify ballots in March. And at that time, the board can choose to cancel the election as well. So this is just calling for the election, getting it on the books. At the present time, the resolution, or the general fund levy would be a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. That represents less than a mil, point nine three mils, and it would be a buck twenty-five a year on a hundred thousand dollar home. So that's the, that's the tax impact on that one.
Any trustee, oh, sorry.
Sorry, that's it.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Witcher?
I have questions about all four of them that are coming up. What will this do for our budget if they pass?
Yeah, thanks. So if, if you, if you go back to pages thirty and thirty-one, we're already contemplating them as part of the mix. So if you, yeah, if you go into the over base levy line, we're, we're already penciling those in. So, good question.
Trustee Witt?
One, one quick question. She's, she's saying all four. You're only including the first two in this, right? And not the safety levy, because that one, we have a lot more discretion on the amount.
Yeah, good clarification. So the, the only one that I'm referring to is the general fund, which, which bolsters our budget on the general fund. The other two, the safety levy, could offset expenditures inside the general fund, which would have, could have a potential positive impact on the general fund.
Well, you mean the elementary and the high school general fund?
Yeah. What I was referring to, elementary and high school general fund, and then the other two would be the safety levy, which is a different topic.
So, so give it to me in Meg Witcher Layman's terms, not Pat McHugh mathematical genius terms.
Yeah.
When we chose how much we're asking for, for this levy, are we asking for the stars so we don't have to do this again for a few years? Did we ask for the medium amount? I'm just like, when I'm talking to constituents, I need to know what to say.
Yeah, good distinction. So the general fund is, is a maxed amount. So it's a, it's a, we can only levy so much. And it's, it's an amount calculated pursuant to the school funding formula. So, so when I show you page thirty and thirty-one, until we do our enrollment count in February, that's, that's the amount we can ask for, and it's capped. The, the safety levy, we don't, we're not identifying an amount yet. What we're saying, that's a possibility to cover a variety of, of expenditures that are, that are outlined in, in statute. So twenty-nine dash two thirty-six identifies appropriate expenditures that, that could fall under that safety levy. So let's say, let's say that levy amount is, is, includes five hundred thousand dollars for, for specific staffing and O and M improvements to the building that are currently paid for out of the general fund. That five hundred thousand dollar obligation would move to this different budget source. So that, that's how it would benefit us.
Trustee Witt?
Okay. Just to add, and correct me if I'm wrong. So the general fund ones, yes, we're asking for the maximum, but we've been operating at the maximum. So it's really retaining the funding that we currently have off of those calculated to the, the state maximum that if there were no changes, like Mike was saying, that never happens, that we get us that three percent. But, yeah, there's changes. But it's, it's really a continuing of our current funding off of those general fund levies.
That's right.
Any other questions? All right. This is an elementary board motion. Is there a motion to approve the resolution on the table? Moved by trustee Witt, second by trustee F. Garris. Any trust, final trustee comments? Any public comments? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the resolution, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. And now on to five, which is approve the call for school election for high school general fund levy, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash four. Back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right. Thank you. So this is the, the corollary to the elementary side. The elementary, or the high school levy at this point is estimated at three hundred and three thousand eight forty-nine. After February, we'll have a, have a real specific number there. That's, shows up on page thirty-one. I'm glad Meg mentioned that. So you can see the over base increase. That's the amount that's, that's reflected there. This would, would be less than a mil, point nine one mils in the high school district, which is a buck twenty-four per year on a hundred thousand dollar home, just for context.
Any trustee questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion from a high school trustee for the proving the resolution? Moved by trustee F. Garris, second by trustee Witt. Any trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor of approving this resolution on the table, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, including trustee Vogel online. And now we'll move on to topic six, which is to approve the call for school election for elementary safety level, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash five. Back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right. Thanks. So this is, this is the, the new levy. This is the, this is the funding source for, for the safety expenditures, which, which I'll summarize as planning for improvements to and maintenance of school and student safety, programs to support school and student safety and security, installing or updating security-related facility improvements, and installing or updating response systems using contemporary technologies. So this would be recognizing the expenditure obligation for these, these various areas and moving it to, to a new funding source. We're not recommending an amount or getting into any detail in, in that regard. We're just identifying and preserving a spot for this, this levy in May. So that's the point of the resolution. Anything to add?
Well, maybe a question first.
Okay. And I, I've talked a little bit about this and have been trying to communicate about the use of a safety levy and just being really forthcoming on this is that with the upcoming budget challenges that we have, we have a number of things that we are required to do and, and things that we have a moral obligation to do to provide safety for our students. And then we have some that we're actually not required to do. For example, we are not required to have school resource officers. We recognize the value and benefit of that, but we're currently expending somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars annually to have school resource officers in our school. And it's not even enough to cover the need that's out there. Pat talked a little bit about some of the things that you can cover in those costs. I think it can include things like staff training, like active shooter training, or prevention-type training. So if you're talking about character strong, or leader in me, or data collection for behaviors and different things that you're looking for antecedents to a problem. And so we've been working, trying to pull together, you know, a rough idea of what those things could cost, and then what you could reasonably tell your, your voters when you say, this is what we need. And so it really is looking at offsetting all of these expenses that we incur to promote and provide safety for our students. And it could go much bigger. A lot of it is tied up in what I would refer to as facilities or infrastructure. It could be for things like malware for our computers to keep our kids safe so that we're not getting hacked. It can be for our camera systems. It could be for putting bulletproof glass in all of our windows, or at least a film on them. It could be for preventing people to be able to see in. We can only see out. There's just, it's an ongoing list. And you can come up with a, a pretty significant cost. I don't have everything figured out yet, but right now, between elementary and high school, I've got a, a list that doesn't even include everything. And in some areas, I think I've really lowballed it, around two point nine million. And expenditures that we currently have for the district that we pay for out of the general fund, that with a voter-approved safety levy, we could shift those expenditures to that and thereby create some opportunities for us. My concern is that we've, with ESER, we've added a lot of positions that support safety for our students, our behavior interventionists, our social workers, you know, and we can include school counselors, school psychologists, your administrators. You can include a lot of people in that, and not, certainly not all of it. But you can certainly include a, a percentage of that and say reasonably, you know, a school principal is dealing with safety-related issues when they are dealing with bomb threats, when they're dealing with potential tough customers on campus. We've seen it. We've experienced it. We were just in a secure the other day at one of our school sites. Like, this is an ongoing thing that we're spending a lot of time, energy and money on. And so we don't have a, an actual dollar amount to put in front of the board today. We actually want to talk about it through the budget committee this week and, and try and come up with, you know, an amount, and then have that discussion with the full board on, on what we think our community and our, will support.
Trustee Witcher?
I think that this is the direction that we need to go in. I reckon my concern is, is that knowing the kind of general feel of a lot of our community right now, if it's going to pass, is what scares me. And I just really urge us, we have to figure out a concentrated communication thing, because there are certain things that will quote-unquote sell this levy. Safety of our kids, behavioral interventionists, you know, that sort of thing. Bulletproof glass, I don't know is going to. Malware, I don't think is going to. So I just would like to see, like, what our plan is to sell this, to make it happen. Because May is really, really, it's right around the corner.
Vice Chair Hobbins?
I guess I'm just curious about how flexible we are with, like, how upstream, like, violence prevention or safety issues we can get with this levy, as opposed to, like, the more downstream Band-Aid, bulletproof glass situation.
Yeah. And, and when I look at it, especially on the personnel side, it is all upstream. You know, prevention is, is your number one thing that you can do when it comes to, to safety. Part of the reason why we're bringing this, and I asked to bring it in January, typically this would come in late February, and then we'd maybe plan them out. We have a comms plan and strategy that we're currently working on. We've calendared it out. And so asking for the resolution tonight gives us an extra month of time to be able to start communicating the concerns that you have, and then to really talk about and, and pin down the details of what is going to be included in this. I use bulletproof glass as a, as an example, but other things that we already have that have ongoing costs are our door card readers, our security entrances, the software that goes to run those. I recognize those aren't, like, super, I don't know what the right, I know what the word I was going to use, but I'm not going to use it.
I know.
Appealing things to talk about, but they, but they are, they're, they actually become a, a pretty significant component of it. If I were to, if I were to boil down the, the kind of facility infrastructure costs that I would be looking to ask our community to support, it's probably in the neighborhood of around a half a million dollars a year. And that's door replacement and window replacement and, and those kind of things. It's, it's not actually the bulk of the, of, of the cost. What I've included in, in those costs are things like percentage of school counselors, school psychs, administrators, hundred percent of behavior interventionists, hundred percent of our people that we employ for security. We have on-call security. We have a, a couple of gentlemen that work in the district that provide our security services through the day, respond to all of our alarms, our testing our equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So those are the things that I, I want to see be the, the primary focus.
Trustee Mercer?
And right now, the district and the administration is forced to the choice to choose between SROs and doors that lock and teachers, because it's all general fund. So this is fundamentally the opportunity for the community to take that choice between doors and locks and teachers and, and say we can have both. Because otherwise, we're making the choice between the two and the general fund.
That's a selling point right there. I mean, I think also, like, we have community members that are coming to us and asking what we can do to better invest in our schools. And this is what we can tell them to do, these parents to do, is to make sure this thing passes.
Any other questions? None. So is this a statewide resolution that other double A schools will be doing?
Bozeman passed this last year. Kalispell failed it. I don't know if there, I think Helen is going to run it. Helen is going to run it as well. So this is specific to each individual district. The safety levy in the law currently, the way it's written, can be for a limited duration, or it can be in perpetuity. And so if we do do a, an in-perpetuity, we would like to add some language that somehow or another, we would add some sort of an escalation clause not to exceed the state inflationary increase that we receive. Because if you levy a hundred thousand dollars today, and it's in-perpetuity, that hundred thousand dollars isn't going to buy you as much twenty years from now. It just, it's going to lose its value over time. So we want to be able to have some way, a mechanism to do that, because, you know, when mill values go up, it will not change the funding level of, of what we ask for unless we specifically put that into the language.
All right. So we'll do, we have two of them. First one up is the elementary board. Is there a motion to approve the resolution on the table? Moved by trustee F. Garris, second by vice chair Hobbins. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the vote, the resolution, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. And now we'll go to the high school side of this resolution. Mr. McHugh.
Nothing to add.
All right. Any trustee questions for the high school side? CNN, is there a motion from a high school trustee? Moved by vice chair Walker Andrews, second by trustee F. Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the resolution on table, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, including trustee Vogel, online. Now we're on to topic eight, which is to approve the Conley Transportation Addendum. And this is over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thanks. So Burley McWilliams, our director of O&amp;M, is here for the Whittier agenda item. So he would like to handle these next two items. Thanks, Burley.
My pleasure. So this is for Conley Transportation, who buses our Sealy Lake, Sealy Swan High School students. We have two routes that he currently runs, and we are proposing, recommending a five-year, new five-year contract. It's not necessarily clear in the write-up, but we would be a four percent, year one, four percent, year two, four percent, year three, and then year four and five would be negotiated and determined towards the end of the third year. We, it would be a six thousand one hundred seventy-five dollar increase to the current annual base contract, which would make the new base rate just over a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Mercer.
How, what's the, what was the last increase on our, our main transportation contract, our Missoula one?
So last year, it was eleven-point-three percent.
This is considerably better. Four percent is considerably less than eleven-point-three percent.
Yeah, sure. Can't argue that.
Okay.
And last year, Conley was a five percent increase. So they currently bus about twenty-five students between Condon and, and Potomac. So one route goes south, one route goes north. Any other questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, is there a motion from a high, this is a high school-born motion. Is there a motion to approve the agenda item moved by vice chair Walker Andrews, second by trustee F. Garris? Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor of approving the agenda item, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, including trustee Vogel, online. So now we'll move on to topic nine, which is to approve the transportation route mileage changes. Over to you, Mr. McWilliams.
Thank you. So this route was approved years ago by the board. And then what we did, because we didn't need anymore, we mainly used it for special needs or special circumstance routes, which would include, I'll kind of just give you a list, special need students, fit students, ELL students, preschool, early kindergarten, and leveling. It kind of equates into that, into that realm. And we haven't had a need for that, but with our special need student numbers rising, those, that need has become needly. And so we, as of December eleventh, so this would be a retroapproval for proper reimbursement for the mileage. We had to bring that route on. Just to kind of give you a little bit of numbers, last year, we ended the school year. And it, and really how it starts off is it typically doubles from September to, to June. The numbers typically double. Last year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we started the year at two-hundred-and-twenty-three, and it went to four-hundred-and-thirty-two at the end of the year. So we finished the year with four-thirty-two, and we're currently already at four-forty-two. So we're more than we ended with last year. And so this route's imperative to get our kids to school. And then what we'll do is we'll take the approval to the board, the county board of transportation, and so we can get proper reimbursements.
Any trustee questions? CNN, this is our elementary board motion. Is there a motion to approve the agenda item? Moved by trustee F. Garris, second by trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the agenda item, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. And now we'll move on to ten, which is permission to award repairs of flood damage at Whittier Elementary. And this is back to you, Mr. McWilliams.
Yeah, thank you. So last year, about this time, we had a, a pretty large flood that started on the third floor of Whittier, who was currently being used by Missoula Head Starts. We were, it was, because it was on the third floor, we had water all the way down to the basement. And it impacted probably about seventy percent of the building. A lot of it was cosmetic flooring, paint. Had a mitigation company come in, clean it up. And then we've, we received a bid from the restoration company to put the building back together. It was over the eighty thousand dollar required dollar figure to put the public out, to put the project out for public bid. So we started working with the city and determining what needed to be architect drawings, what needs to be engineered, and so forth. And so we put that project out for RFP, and we had two submittals. And we're recommending awarding to Langless and Associates in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. This would be paid for with insurance proceeds.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Witcher.
What's the estimated time of completion?
It's a loaded question. Ask that maintenance guy how long it's going to take. So we are, the contract, the contract is through, final completion is February thirteenth, I believe. I'm sorry, July thirteenth. So it'll be done, and, and, and we'll put Missoula Head Start back in there, which I believe they start in the first week of September. The contractor's saying it's going to be done a whole lot sooner than that, but...
So Head Start does one out of Cold Springs and back to Whittier. We're going to refill it with them.
That's the plan, yes. Yep. They actually are looking at making some capital improvements of their own.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, CNN, so this is an elementary board motion. Is there a motion on to approve the Langless and Associates for the repairs associated with the flood damage? Moved by vice chair Hobbins, second by trustee F. Garris. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the agenda item, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. And now we'll move on to B, topic one, which is the minimum, which is the minimum wage increase. And this is over to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Hi. Yeah, this is really just information only. We did have positions that were at ten dollars, but we changed that, if you recall, over the summer. So we are, we are good. So it's really just an information-only item from me.
All right. Any, I'll just open the floor for any trustee questions or comments. CNN, any public comment? CNN, so now we'll move on to topic two, which is to approve the personnel report. Back to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Pretty routine. Nothing of note.
Any questions from a trustee? CNN, we have, we'll do elementary first. So is there an elementary motion to approve the personnel report? Moved by trustee F. Garris, second by vice chair Hobbins. Any final comments by trustee? Although, any public comments? All those in favor for approving the elementary personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a high school motion moved by vice chair Walker Andrews, second by trustee F. Garris? Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the agenda item, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, including trustee Vogel. So now we'll move on to topic three, which is to approve the elementary school year calendar for twenty-two-four, twenty-two-three. Back to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Yes. So this applies to all the calendars. There's a section seven-point-eight of the CBA requires the board to consult with the association, the MEA. And what we do is we have a calendar committee that's made up of administrators and MEA members from different levels, elementary, middle school, high school, and, and some other folks as well. And we draft the calendar, and we have several meetings back and forth, sending that to stakeholders, getting feedback. And this is where we've landed for these draft calendars. If you approve these calendars, we then go back and do Jefferson, Willard, and Seeley. And we work with them individually. They adjust things, you know, a day here, a day there, and then bring that back to you for approval.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Witcher.
I'm like on question fire tonight. Will the early K program follow the Jefferson schedule or the elementary school schedule?
If it's at Jefferson, it'll follow the Jefferson schedule. If they're in the buildings, they follow the building schedules.
Trustee F. Garris.
Two questions. One, I see we did two weeks for Christmas, New Year's this year, and it was one week this year. Does that have any time effect for anything? And two, and I apologize, I ask this question every year, but we actually ran into this issue a few years ago. Did somebody actually calculate out the minutes to make sure that we fulfill our minutes in the middle school?
Yes. I have a fun Excel spreadsheet, if you'd like to see it, where we calculate minutes for each of the, of the accreditation groups, and also workdays for employees, start times, end times, recess, lunch, all of that, that plays into it. And your first question was about the length of the break over winter break. So a couple, couple things. We do consult with the University of Montana, and we align our spring break to them. And we have their information out to about twenty-two-six. Although they haven't had it approved by the state yet, we know what their, what their drafts look like. But the calendars are cyclical. So this is essentially the same as two-thousand-and-thirteen, fourteen, I think was the year. So the, this year is twelve-thirteen, and they just kind of circle around. And it just kind of ends up being, being that way. And we calculate hours.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
This is more of a comment than a question. As we talk about personalized learning and competencies, and no longer talking about seat time, I just wonder if somewhere between now and twenty-eighty, calendars will be very different or nonexistent. That's all.
Yeah, maybe. This, this serves a couple purposes, though. We, we also have day requirements per our CBA. You know, there's workdays for classified employees. So what this committee does not do is determine the schedule within the day. So that's separate. It's just the workdays. It's the annual calendar.
Trustee Mercer.
Does the middle school require more hours than the elementary?
In some grade levels, yes, off the top of my head.
So I'll just make my usual...
Grade four through twelve, same minute requirement? I should use this. Grade four through twelve, same minute requirement. However, we also have a policy that recognizes that we are not actually required to count seat time.
So, I mean, my, my normal thing every year, the schedule looks the same between elementary and middle school in terms of start and end and breaks and whatever. And yet, elementary gets a spring parent-teacher conference and middle school does not. Well, middle school and elementary, I mean, I, maybe I'm missing it, but... I guess my question is, is that necessary?
Is, is the elementary parent-teacher conference necessary?
No. Is taking away the middle school one necessary?
Um, that's a good question. I don't know that off the top of my head.
And I would, I would say I don't know the historical context for conferences.
We missed counting, and we had to cut them, because we missed the number count. And so the way to make it up in the emergency was to cut it, because that gave us another day and a half or whatever. And now it's persisted, despite us having the ability to plan. So anyways, I, I, I'm probably, I am in the minority on this. I'm going to vote against the middle school one, because I think there should be a spring parent-teacher conference.
Well, and I, I think that speaks to, if you go back to the strategic plan, family and community engagement. You know, a lot of times, we get kind of beat up for not trying to engage our families. And I certainly see that as being an area that we could, would like an opportunity to have a little more discussion with my team and, and understand some of that. But again, I mean, it is, I mean, it can be a board decision. I mean, we have the ability to, to have that in there. But I, I just don't know what the historical context has been for it. But I appreciate what, what you shared.
Any other questions? So we have three. We'll do elementary, middle school, and high school. First up, is there a motion to approve the elementary school calendar for twenty-two-four, twenty-two-three? Moved by trustee F. Garris, second by vice chair Hobbins. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the elementary school calendar, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Now we'll move on to the middle school calendar. Is there a motion on the table for the middle school? Moved by trustee F. Garris, second by... No one? Do we want to do a discussion on this? Table this one? Trustee Mercer.
I mean, if there's interest, I mean, I guess we'd table it, and I guess I would, I mean, I'd be happy to make a motion to add the parent-teacher conference off mirroring the one in the elementary. I do value it. I do, I, I just that. I mean, but if there's, if that's going to blow something up, or we don't know the minutes right now, I guess I'm hesitant. If, there's some sense, well, I don't know. I'm hesitant to blow it up right now with, with the, the number counting. So that's just my...
Vice Chair Hobbins.
I just didn't want trustee Mercer to feel like he was alone in this. I absolutely agree that we need some spring conferences at the middle school level, especially with kids going into high school. You know, it's like, there's, there's a lot of, I don't know, it just feels like a little bit lost as a parent, especially at this time. So anyway, I agree with trustee Mercer.
So if you'd like, I could take that back to the committee, and we could talk about including that. We can look at the, at the time. And there potentially is room within the existing calendar. But rather than approve it and then go back and change what's on the calendar, if you'd like, I could bring that back at the next meeting.
That sounds great. So do we need to make a motion to table it? Yes. Okay. Is there a motion to table, moved by trustee Mercer, second by vice chair Hobbins? Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All those in favor for table in, item three, the, or item four to middle school year calendar for twenty-two-four, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous, no, not unanimous, no? Yes, no? To, to table, oh, okay. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. So now we'll move on to five, which is to approve the high school calendar for twenty-two-five. Do you have anything to add on this, Mr. Lebowski?
No, I do not.
Is there any questions from a trustee on the high school calendar? CNN, is there a motion to approve the high school calendar for twenty-two-four, twenty-two-three? Moved by vice chair Hobbins. Oh, twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five. Gotcha. Second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? All those in favor for approving the high school calendar for twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, including trustee Vogel, online. And the time is now seven forty-eight, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jen.
Excellent.